Good evening, everybody. I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for April 25th, 2023. Just want to let everybody know this meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Sapienza.
Here.
Barbo.
Here.
Blackmer.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Obasahan.
Alezkiewicz.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. And the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
ABC. Okay. Okay, approval of the minutes from the meeting of April 11th, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Move for approve.
Second. Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Alezkiewicz. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing done. Motion passes. Hearing of visitors on agenda. This is going to be an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. We have a couple of topics here that I know a lot of people want to speak. You may speak to that at this time or at the end of the meeting, we have the hearing of visitor or the public comments. Okay, open forum at the end of the meeting. At this time, would anybody like to approach the mic? Please state your name and address for the record, please. And you have two minutes.
Hello, Trevor Gilman, 45 Mead Avenue. I know you're going to be shocked, but I'm here because there's an airport item on the agenda today. 12,261 Mayor's Communication requesting the authorization to execute grant assurances from the Aeronautics Division of Mass Department of Transportation on behalf of the City of North Adams. I've been in front of this council numerous times asking the same question. I've done it in every forum that's been given to me. I've attended Finance Committee meetings bringing up the same topic. Each time I've brought it up, there has been no resolution and I know, well, first I'll just say that the problem is that the grant assurances with these grants that we're authorizing are not being followed by the City of North Adams. I've been saying this for years. It's been going on and going on and it's been ignored. And so I went, two, three years ago, I started attending Finance Committee meetings to get the finances straightened out for the Airport Commission. And there were no changes that year with the Finance Committee. I know Counselor Wilkinson, you said that we would address it the following year. That never happened. I then came to the City Council and requested you to not vote for the last budget because of this same reason, and it was voted on and nothing happened afterwards. And so now I'm here again because today you're being asked to actually vote yourselves on this grant assurance. In the past, it was always the Airport Commission that signed these grant assurances and the City Council just kind of was separated from it. But now today, you're being asked to vote on it yourself. And I just want to point out two areas that I will highlight that are areas that are not being followed by the current city budget process. And K2, it says, "All revenues generated at the airport and payable to the Airport Commission plus any local taxes on aircraft fuel established after December 30th, 1987, shall be deposited in an Airport Commission segregated account and expended by the Airport Commission."
Mr. Gilman, I'm going to have to wrap it up. You've had your two minutes.
For the capital of operating costs of the airport. That's not being done. I'm asking you to vote no on that item. Thank you.
Mr. Bozley, please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. President. Throw you to the members of this body. For the record, Dan Bozley, 3 Elmwood Avenue. And I'm here today to talk for two minutes on the proposal that the college has for putting homeless families at the college. I think it's a bad idea for several reasons. And I understand that this board is not responsible, nor do they have a vote for this. But it should be of interest and it should be something that we all have an opinion on. It's not good for the families that are going to be there. If this wasn't a state facility, you'd have to have bars on those windows. But because it's not a state facility, it's not due to zoning. When you walk out of the towers, you walk about six feet, you're in the road. There's no playground. And they want to put kids up there, 50 to 75 families. Now, in the minutes from November, the executive minutes that the college had of their executive session, they said, "Family's going to be there five days. We expect that they're going to be there from December of last year to June of this year." Well, it's almost June, we haven't even signed a contract yet. It also said 18 months, then they're gone. I don't think anybody believes that. And if you look at the, and I can give you the executive session minutes and I can give you the frequently asked questions that the DHCD put out about this project. DHCD said the initial contract was going to be for 18 months. Not that the contract will be for 18 months, but the initial contract. And originally, we were told they'd be there five to 10 days and they would be residents from Berkshire County. Now we're being told they're residents from Western Mass. And in the latest thing the college said, the residents from Western Mass, but there's going to be some people from elsewhere. So we're not servicing the families that we have here. And they're not going to be there for five days. Because if you look at the Lewison House, we have three families there, and those three families are there for an average of five to six months. So it's not good for the families. It's not good for the college. The college will be hemmed in on both sides by substance abuse housing on this side, homeless housing on this side with no place to grow, 700 students projected for this fall. It's getting to the point where, why bother?
Okay.
And then let me wrap it up by saying, it's not good for the city. Because the city depends on the economy of the college. And the economy of the college is failing. We need to rectify that, and it's not by putting homeless families there. I thank the council for their attention. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak at hearing of visitors? Ms. Sporber. Oh, Mr. Cardamino.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. I wish I could speak as, about the things that Dan Bozley proposed, and he is very adamant about what happens. Okay, the only thing is, I'm saying is, that is going to change that neighborhood terribly. Like you say, there's no place for the people to go and everything else. And it's going to open up Pandora's Box. We're going to have more problems. It's going to cause more problems for the college than it's going to solve. And I would like to see a public hearing so that the people could come and state that and not only for two minutes, for as long as they want to speak, because it's going to affect us for who knows how long. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardamino.
Hi there. I'm Melissa Sporber, and I go by Lani. I'm at 18 Temple Street in North Adams. I'm also here to talk about the plan for housing homeless families in Berkshire Towers. Oh, I'm also an alum of North Adams State College, 1992, now MCLA. So Berkshire Towers is not an appropriate place for families. There's no yard, there's no kitchens. It's not, the suite-style housing is not set up for family usage. There's just so many reasons that it's not an appropriate place for homeless families. I do understand the plight of homeless families and do want to think about creative solutions in terms of housing homeless families, but I don't think Berkshire Towers is the way to do it. If MCLA feels like they must do it in terms of the revenue, a short-term period, possibly, this is not ideal either. But having students move from the townhouses to Berkshire Towers, homeless families in the townhouses temporarily, they have their own kitchens, there's a yard, there's a fire lane, there's all kinds of things. But what we really need is, we need to know the president's plan for increasing enrollment beyond the nursing program and the resurrecting of athletic programs. I think we need lots of new thinking around that. And again, I know this board doesn't have anything to do with it, and I'm a little disappointed that the president is not here, but there you go.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, approach the mic. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Matt Tatro, 9 Elmwood Avenue. I live directly adjacent from the Berkshire Towers with my young family that we relocated to North Adams, opened up several businesses in North Adams, big advocate for the city. There's been numerous issues going on recently. Most pressing is the Berkshire Towers issue. The issue is an enormous one for North Adams. So we need to know what MCLA is, their plan is. This seemingly is foreshadowing a way to kind of jam their pockets now in an effort to later close. There's no possible way to increase enrollment over at MCLA with homeless on one side and addiction, recovered addicted addicts on the other side. I employ recovered addicts. I throw the stigma out the window. I don't think anybody that is in this room has one single miniscule opposition to the cause and what we're trying to do with housing homeless people. But the effect is going to be the, is going to be the end result. And talk about counter productivity in terms of increasing enrollment in MCLA, we've all given our, we know the scope of going to visit a college and how you determine whether or not you feel the safety of your children is utmost. People are looking at safety of their children first and foremost. And if they're not in a safe environment, who's going to send their kid to school there? I'd hate to see MCLA dissolve our city desperately, desperately needs it. We had the opportunity to buy the Boardman's. We didn't do so. We're not making appropriate decisions on the MCLA campus in the best interest of the city. I think we need to have a conversation with MCLA to see where they're headed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tatro. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Oh. Whoever wants to be first. One of the mics, please. The mic is for the TV audience and not for the...
Sure, sure. Jeff Posther, 57 Davenport Street. I just want to echo the sentiments of pretty much everything I've heard, especially this gentleman's idea of if we want, if they want, if they're serious about it, you know, they need to come forward and have a very open conversation with all of the people so we know what's going on. There's just so much, you know, differing reports of what's happening. So if it is serious, you know, I think there's a lot of reasons to be against it. You know, it has to be, you know, I think the council, and I'm not, the legal matter is one thing, you know, whether it's their decision and they have sovereignty or whatever over that spot, I don't know. But it's a town, it's a town decision. It affects all of us. You know, we have to be involved in that decision and they have to, they have to work it out with us. And that's, I don't know how that's done, but you know, I would, I would like to make sure if we want to move forward, we're all coming together as a community on this and not it being imposed upon us. So hopefully, let's all work together and get them to say what the plan is and see if we all agree and if it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Catherine Montgomery. I live at 67 Porter. And on the issue of homelessness, our town has a lot of houses that are empty and rundown that private people don't feel able to fix up. And many of them are tax forfeited, I believe. That is, their taxes have not been paid. And I think the city might look into trying to redevelop those homes in some way. For example, there's a group of apartment houses on South and Spring Streets that have been empty for years, and I know that they are not paying taxes. And they could be, they once were decent housing, and they've sunk to, I don't know what. But I think the city needs to make an effort to revive some of the housing in the town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mr. Fitch?
Good evening. I'm Andrew Fitch. I live at 20 East Quincy Street here in North Adams. I'm neither for nor against this housing project here, but I did want to speak about something that's connected to it, and that is the human aspect. I see this as an opportunity, if this does pass, if this does proceed, for us to step forward as a community and greet these folks, welcome them, help them get plugged into our community, show them the high points of it, get them involved in our Fall Foliage Parade, get them connected to the many jobs that are open in our restaurants, shops, and other businesses. And I know some business owners have a really hard time hiring for these roles. So I think there's an opportunity there. And I wanted to say that if we, I know there's a lot of energy and, you know, upset in the room, and I understand a lot of it, but I do suspect if we channel even just a little bit of that into this kind of welcoming attitude and planning for that, I think we could have a really beautiful outcome here and a great opportunity for the city and to welcome and to help these families who are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael Malazo. I actually live in Clarksburg, not in North Adams, but I own a bunch of real estate here. My concern is, as a community, I feel like we already have a deficit of adequate mental health resources, eye doctors, you name it. If you call a doctor and you're not already set up with them, it will take you months to get into it. If we're going to house 50 more families, where are these folks going to get care? And if the college decides to shut down after 18 months or after 12 months, what happens to these poor families that are now bust into our community? They're dumped onto streets that we don't have the resources, place to put them. Presumably, they're just left here for the community to try to figure it out. I would like to see the state or MCLA come forth with a plan that they're going to have some mental health resources for these folks as well as some substance abuse resources. And let's try to integrate them into our community, like some other people said, so they can come and get jobs and be out on their own. But without that as part of the plan, I think this is a horrible idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
Hi, Pierce Brown, 57 Davenport Street. Speaking on the issue of MCLA turning Berkshire Towers into shelter for unhoused families, I would implore everyone to, as many other people have said, think about the families involved and also separate that issue from the process by which it's happening. I've gone the route of making several public records requests just to corroborate some of the information that's been going around because it's been, you know, pretty much you hear one thing and then you hear another. So I would implore anyone who's interested in this issue to do the same and to just really think about what's really, what the bottom line here is. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we shall move on. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Council Paper 12,256. A petition granting National Grid permission to erect and maintain poles and wires on Massachusetts Avenue. Do we have a representative from National Grid?
Yes, sir. Michael Tatro, National Grid. So we have a project we would like to...
Yes, speak into the mic, please. That's for people at home and for...
My name is Michael Tatro. I work for National Grid. So I'm here to petition the town to get permission to move a pole, Pole 69 on Mass Ave to facilitate the excavation for a large drainage job that I believe the town of North Adams is financing. So we're just going to move the pole down 30 feet, set a stub pole across the street, and then they can continue their excavation and finish their drainage job.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to let everybody know, due to a clerical error, normally we would vote on this item tonight, but we will be voting on this at the next scheduled council meeting. So we will not be voting on it tonight, but we will still open the floor to public comments. Anybody wish to speak? Mr. Cardamino? Mr. Tatro, could I have you go to the mayor's podium and use that microphone? And then they'll have Mr. Cardamino at the public microphone.
You know, this has come up, they're asking for permission to put up two poles. But yet they come up to my house and never ask permission. They just put two poles with a guide pole on there. There was no supervision from National Grid. And Mr. Tatro, we had a little conversation this morning, and he was telling me, he says, "Well, we have an easement." He says, "That street is 50 feet wide." It is not 50 feet wide, it's 30 feet wide. And there is no easement on my property. So he says, he tried to say that he had a 10-foot easement. There is no easement. And I want that pole moved. They went up there and they made a mess, and when they dug out the soil, it was clay. And I had some ground cover. And it's, there's a space about a foot or two foot wide with all clay and no more ground cover. And then he's trying to tell me that that is, he doesn't have to come before council to get a permission to put the poles up there. Well, National Grid never had a pole there. It belonged to some other company, and they shared, and he admitted, they shared the poles. So no National Grid wants to put their own pole up there. And that is a new location, and they should be coming before council to ask for permission and then clean up after themselves. You know, they went up there without permission, and if they don't resolve this, I am going to charge them with trespassing and damage to my property. And if I have to take them to court, I am going to do it, even if it costs me money. But that pole is going to be moved one way or the other. You need to abide by this, this ordinance. And they haven't been doing it, but it's been for years just coming, okay, put up two poles, it's something. But this has been not noticed by the council until I brought it forward. And now you've got some guidelines as to how to address this situation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cardamino. Anybody else wish to speak regarding the situation of the poles on Massachusetts Avenue at this time? Counselor Wilkinson.
It's not a curiosity. Why can't we vote on this tonight?
It's not on the agenda. It wasn't placed in the agenda.
That would be a good reason. Thank you.
I could speak to Mr. Cardamino's issues on East Quincy. If...
Should we, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
So a few of the street poles were replaced due to their age and condition, and they'd been there since sometime in the 40s. So we replaced them. And for our poles, our existing poles, we have an easement for the street pole. So I didn't come to the, I didn't have to petition the town to get permission because we had poles there since a long time. Well, they're actually, we share the poles with the phone company, Verizon. So Verizon had set the previous poles, but the rules changed. Now we set all the poles. They pay us to get, you know, part ownership of the poles. And that's exactly what the, the new poles are joint-owned poles, part owned by Verizon and National Grid. Now our poles are much bigger, bigger diameter and taller. So the push pole, unfortunately, was on Mr. Cardamino's property. We're trying to resolve that issue. I thought I might be making the push pole a little shorter, but he doesn't seem to want a push pole there. So there is another option. We put those really big fiberglass poles that don't need the anchor or guy. There's one over on Protection Ave by Greilock Works. There's one in North Adams on Route 8, just south of the gun shop there. They're very big and sort of unsightly, but we could put one there if we can't fit a push pole in, you know, on the town take. The, when I did mention that, before I did the research, I thought maybe that right away was 50 feet. Well, indeed, it's 33 feet on the downhill side of East Quincy from Summit Downhill. It's 33 feet wide, so we didn't have as much room as what I thought. But the street pole is indeed on the town take, the push pole. At this point, it's on Mr. Cardamino's property. We can put a big, a big old fiberglass pole there or cut that push pole back to your lichen so it's back where the other pole was located for the last 80 years, and it wouldn't be as unsightly as those big 45-foot fiberglass poles.
Point of order. So just to let you know, a lot of this topic, which is fine, we've let it go, but it's actually not the agenda item that we have.
Right.
So it's appreciative, you know, and just saying it's, we're getting a lot on a whole different street.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. On that note, I am going to ask that this remain on topic regarding the poles on Massachusetts Avenue and if Mr. Cardamino wishes to have a conversation with Mr. Tatro at some point in time that we do outside the forum.
Thank you.
This is not a back and forth.
Yeah, we're having too much back and forth on this one.
Huh?
We're, too much back and forth. This is not a time for negotiation.
This is supposed to be an open forum. And I should be able to question him, and he should be able to answer me.
Point of order. This public hearing is not on that property.
This is not on that project. No, this is on the Massachusetts Avenue poles. This is on the poles that are being located on Massachusetts Avenue.
I beg your pardon, Mr. President. I had already checked into this, and they told me there would be some back and forth, which would be okay according to ordinance with open forum. And I would like to mention, he said they want to put a fiberglass pole up there.
Okay.
And when he was up my house, he told me they would still have to put a support pole.
Mr. Cardamino, I'm going to ask you to have that conversation with Mr. Tatro outside this forum. You can go back and forth with him all you want, but not in this forum. We are strictly for the Massachusetts Avenue poles. That's what's on the agenda tonight. That is not on the agenda. And please continue this conversation with him at another time.
Are you going to bring this back for discussion again?
We can bring it back.
Well, that's what I would like. So we could have an open forum like it's supposed to be an open forum.
Okay, but you're changing the subject. You're discussing poles on East Quincy Street, but you're not discussing the poles on Massachusetts Avenue. And that's what this is. It's on the poles of Massachusetts Avenue.
I asked you, are you going to bring this back for discussion with the open forum for the poles up on my house?
Counselor Wilkinson? Counselor Wilkinson?
May I suggest if Mr. Cardamino wants to bring this back, and he certainly has the right to do that, by asking a counselor to place it on the agenda in the future, and then you can speak as long as you want. It has to be...
Well, that's all speculation.
Right now, your poles aren't on the agenda. I know you have deep feelings on this, and you certainly can have a way of speaking about it, but it has to be on the agenda. It's not right now.
Well, you know, it's like I said, this was on the agenda. It says it's an open forum.
About Mass Avenue.
The poles...
No, it doesn't say specifically Mass Avenue. It opens it up to National Grid, and he was addressing the, and nothing was said.
Let me reread, let me reread the council paper. Council Paper 12,0256, "A Petition Granting National Grid Permission to Erect and Maintain Poles and Wires on Massachusetts Avenue." That's what it says in the agenda. It's right here on the agenda.
Okay, if that's the case.
Do you have an issue with the pole on Massachusetts Avenue?
Okay. The poles on Massachusetts Avenue. I'm gonna ask Mr. Tatro, did you go before Tim LaScavo and get an appointment to have them poles looked at? And did you pay a fee? And did you go back after and get it after the, put the poles in? Are you gonna pay for another fee? And also...
Mr. Cardamino, I'm gonna ask you...
And this is about the poles on Mass Avenue. It's right here on the agenda. If you want to read it.
I've read it.
Well, that's what it says right there. Session 2137-1 fees. Mr. LaScavo has to go and inspect that. And then he paid, you pay fifty dollars for the inspection. And then when it's done, Mr. LaScavo goes back again, and he gets paid twenty-five dollars for the poles on Massachusetts Avenue. And also, does the council know whether they have a, through the city solicitor, a hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollar indemnity every year from National Grid? Do you have that, sir?
Well, I'm sure we have very good insurance for our, all of our equipment, people, and yeah, we definitely have good insurance.
Well, you know something? Bring some documentation.
All right. Can we move on?
So the vote will be next week, Senator?
The vote will be at the next council meeting. I believe the next council meeting would be May ninth, May ninth at seven-thirty, same time as we do tonight. Any other questions regarding the installation of these poles? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Tatro. And at this time, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, moving on. What's that? Oh, okay. Oh, all right, okay. Okay, so we've done that one. Yeah, okay. All right. And that would be council paper. Okay. Yep, right there. Okay. All right, very good. Council Paper 11,00826, "An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Various Fees Established in the City Code." This was postponed from the meeting of March 28, 2023. Counselor Bona, do you have anything to report to us at this time?
Yep. After having a discussion with the mayor, we'll post, we request to postpone for one month. So second meeting of May.
Would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to postpone to the second meeting of May.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay. Okay. Council Paper 12,191, "Communication from Counselor Shade, requesting the local Department of Health review the rules and regulations to address the storage of garbage." Counselor Shade, do you wish to say anything to that effect?
So this was recommended to, I believe, Public Safety to have a meeting with, a meeting to also have with the Department of Health. That has not happened yet. So until that happens, there's no movement. So I would recommend to postpone it for, till the second meeting of April.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm aye. I move to postpone till the second meeting of May.
Second.
Second. Okay. Counselor Shade, Counselor Harpen, any comments? Okay. One quick update from the Public Safety Committee. We are planning to have a Public Safety meeting on March 3 at 5:30 PM. I'm sorry?
May?
May 3, yeah, that's what I meant, May 3. I'm sorry, May 3. Hang on, I'm new at this. Okay. All right.
Baptism by fire.
That is true. Okay, so May 3 of this upcoming next week at 5:30 PM, we will be discussing both the taxi ordinance and we will try to get this on the agenda. We'll put it on the agenda. Hopefully, we'll have time to discuss it. So at this time, all in favor of postponing this to the, you said the second meeting of May?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Okay. All right, new business. Mayor's Communication, Paper Number 12,257, Mayor's Communication Number 45, "Recommending the Reappointment of Sandra Thomas to the Board of Registrar of Voters for a Term to Expire, April 1, 2026." Mayor, is there anything you would like to add to that? Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Counselor Leskowitz, Counselor Wilkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Council Paper 12,258, Mayor's Communication Number 46, "Recommending the Reappointment of David Willett to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a Term to Expire, May 1, 2028."
Move to approve.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Second.
Counselor Leskowitz, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Okay, moving right along. Council Paper 12,259, Mayor's Communication Number 47, "Recommending the Appointment of Robert Reynolds to the Conservation Commission, Filling the Unexpired Term of Isaiah Moore for a Term to Expire, August 1, 2024." Motion to approve?
Aye.
Second.
Counselor Bona, Counselor Leskowitz, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. May, Council Paper 12,260, Mayor's Communication Number 48, "Recommending the Appointment of Marie McCarron to the Youth Commission, Filling for a Term to Expire, March 25, 2025."
Motion to approve.
Counselor Harpen?
Second.
Counselor Obasahan, any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Council Paper 12,261, Mayor's Communication Number 49, "Requesting the Authorization to Execute Grant Assurances from the Aeronautics Division of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation on behalf of the City of North Adams." I would like to file the communication without objection and turn this over to Mayor Maxi.
Sure, thank you. So Mass Aeronautics has presented the document, which included official approval from the city council. That's why it's in front of you today. The project itself will provide the rehab for about an eighty-foot-by-a-hundred-foot box hangar, including but not limited to the replacement of all exterior siding, hangar door, damaged structure members, including roof panels, replacing the electrical service, interior lighting, and electrical outlets. The hope is this improvement will allow us to provide more storage for single-engine aircrafts, probably about five or six, resulting in added income for the airport. As we go through this project, it is estimated that the FAA will pay about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand for the project. State share will be sixty-two thousand, with the city coming up with a local share of thirty-five thousand, for a total project cost of five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and change. At a later date, the city will come forward to appropriate their city share. So we are seeking, as part of the document, that the council give me the blessing to execute the document.
Okay, without objection, I'd like to file the communication and move on to the order. Order number, paper number 12,261, "An Order Approving the Authorization to Execute Grant Assurances from the Aeronautics Division of Massachusetts Department of Transportation on behalf of the City of North Adams." Can I get a second? Can I get a motion?
Yeah. I make a motion to postpone to next meeting and refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion to postpone to the finance, send it to the Finance Committee and to the, I'm sorry, the second?
For next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Okay, motion to move this to the next meeting and refer it to the Finance Committee.
So we do got a second. So for discussion, I just want to go through the chair. Mayor, are we okay with, if we can squeeze this for the next meeting?
When is your next meeting?
We'll schedule it quick. Okay, well, we'll talk to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Wilkinson?
During that, the Finance Meeting, I was curious. Mr. Gilman's come, when I was on Finance, he's come numerous times about putting the money in a fund. I don't know all the particulars, but he's, I'm curious as to whether that will be included in the discussion of Finance.
Counselor Bona?
It can be discussed. I don't think it's really the topic. What I would like to actually discuss is obviously have more details on this, but also to, just to go over the, you know, have a better opportunity to hear from Mr. Gilman and his concerns, and because it is definitely different this time of having the council approve our assurances versus how it has been in the past. So, so I want to have opportunity to be able to discuss and hear more about that.
Thank you.
But an enterprise fund is something that's far more involved than what we're gonna cover.
No, I agree, but I mean, he's mentioned numerous times that the city's not following what they're supposed to be doing, so maybe now is the time, pardon me.
Counselor Harpen had her hand up too. Yeah.
Oh, he can finish.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Maybe it's time to have that discussion, that's all. Guy brings the subject up numerous times, and he certainly did it when I was on Finance. And he's right. I said, "We'll do something about that," and it kind of just disappeared. So maybe it's time to talk about it. I mean, we, the city's tried to, or it's promised in the past, to set up numerous enterprise funds, and for one reason or another, they haven't been done. The, when they started charging us for sewer, that was supposed to go into an enterprise fund to fix streets. Money go, we collect for sewer, just goes in the general tilt. There was no enterprise fund set up. That was promised by a different administration, I want to point out. Thank you.
Counselor Harpen?
I do agree with Counselor Wilkinson. This has been going on for quite some time. When I was Chair of the Finance Committee in 2019, Mr. Gilman came to every meeting that we had, and I think there, there's still videotape somewhere. So he, he has been coming here for quite some time, stating the same thing. We need to account for these airport revenues separately, and we need to make sure that that is happening. I don't know if it's happening. I know, I've seen reporting before. I've requested reporting. In 2019, I received a report. That's the last report that I received. So I, it would be hard to go ahead and, and, and agree to this if, if I personally, as a counselor, am not sure that this accounting process is being handled the way that it should be handled, as, as required by the, the grant assurances. So I think the Finance Committee meeting is a right way to go, and we can hopefully resolve the issues there. I'm sure we'll see Mr. Gilman.
Mayor, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, in the fiscal year 2023 budget process, if you remember when we did the budget, we took, we showed the expenses coming out of the airport, and we opened a revolving account. So all the revenue goes in, and all the revenue goes out. We remove the expenses from the budget, and we remove the revenue from the general receipt. So we are making attempts to, we have developed a revolving fund, and part of this grant application is the nuances, and in, under my watch, this is the first time I've been asked to execute something that needed to be approved by the council. So that's why we're here for this part. But we did establish a revolving fund for the airport in fiscal year 2023. Happy to go to Finance, happy to show the ins and outs and the debits and credits of that account, and happy to have more conversation. But we did do that during the budget process.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Yes, I agree that we need to get the ball rolling on getting this enterprise account set up and have accounts properly going where they're supposed to go. Other than that, I do have an issue with one piece of terminology in this. Article E, Section 1, it says, "Notwithstanding any powers that may be granted to the City Council of North Adams, the city agrees not to attempt to reorganize the Airport Commission or in any way to interfere with the autonomy and authority of the Airport Commission as created under Chapter 90, Section 51E of the General Laws without express approval of the Aeronautics Division." And this is an agreement that goes for twenty years. I, I think that's a problem, that the Aeronautics Division would have autonomy over the Airport Commission for twenty years, and we would have to have their, we'd have to get permission from them to make any changes or do anything in regards to the Airport Commission. That's very concerning to me, the way that's written. So I think that needs to be clarified, and hopefully we can get an answer at that Finance Committee as to what exactly that means and how in-depth that is. Because I do wonder, does that mean, also, when we're talking about reorganizing, does that mean new appointments? Does that mean adding new commissioners? Does that mean, so I think there's a lot of, I don't, I don't like that language, and I think that is the biggest issue I see. Otherwise, I, I agree that we also need to take care of the enterprise accounts as well, but to grant another government agency basically control over our commission for twenty years is concerning. Thank you.
Mayor, would you like to answer anything to that, or add anything?
In that section, the FAA is requiring that it be duly authorized, duly authorized, or actually triple-authorized, but through the Airport Commission and the city. So the city isn't unilaterally making the execution. So it's both. And I agree about the terminology about the setup of the committee, but I, I think that is a broader approach. I don't think that's what they're referencing to, but we'll clarify that and discuss that in Finance Committee. But in past grant assurances, we hadn't had to come before this body. So here we are today with a change. So here we are today with a change, which is prompting other questions, which we're happy to answer. But I really don't think the word is enterprise fund. We want to focus on revolving. And we can have more conversation around that, at Finance, if you so choose.
Anybody else? Counselor Barbeau?
Yeah, if we're going to have a little bit of an open discussion, I appreciate that. In response to Mr. Gilman, I have spoken about this repeatedly, both before I was on the council and I went to the administration regarding the current grant assurances that do actually name the City Council multiple times, that are still working today, and discussed the enterprise account and was sent to the city administrator. And Mr. Fiero actually answered the question that we were not going to have an enterprise account, that what we were going to... They had other ways of accounting for that. So I have reached out and really tried to make that happen. I do have some concerns with... On page four, let's see. I think we're in Section 3E. And this is about that the Airport Commission will accept this grant because we do have sufficient state and local funds to finance and carry out this project. It's my understanding, as liaison to the Airport Commission, I do make sure that I attend most of the meetings, that we've actually just lost a grant because this project was required to be completed by June 30th. And I believe that grant is gone. That's not correct?
Could I have you step up to the microphone, please?
Catherine Ead, interim administrative officer. We have not lost any grants.
So the city has all the funding to complete this project at this point? Because I'm almost positive, I just heard that that wasn't the case there. We were short some money, and we're going to try to figure out where that was coming from.
The grant funding in the world of FAA and Mass DOT is fairly complicated. There are different pots of money. So we have some of the pots, we don't have all of the pots. This is a portion of the grant. This is a $43,000 portion from Mass DOT. There's additional monies, the 230,000 from FAA in one pot of money called AIP. There's additional funding that we have applied for out of the bill... The NIL, the built-infrastructure law.
So the STAN-TEC money is still in place?
STAN-TEC's money is fine, yeah. I really don't understand what you're talking about.
Okay.
The grants are all in place or becoming in place as they're supposed to be. We didn't lose anything.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Bona?
Through the chair, to the mayor or Ms. Ead. I do recall, so we keep hearing enterprise fund. And, you know, I recall, we've had discussion, and we talked about wanting the enterprise fund. And I remember past discussions, sitting with Mr. Gilman. And the... I guess the question, or I think the answer I remember at the time, and it might have been from Ms. Ead, was that we are covering ourselves by having the revolving fund versus... The funding versus the enterprise. Because we're... We are showing where there is income and how it's being spent versus... So an enterprise fund is not a requirement. Is that correct, long as we're doing the revolving?
That's correct. An enterprise fund is not a requirement of the grant assurances. What we're doing in a revolving fund complies with the grant assurances.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think we'll get deeper into this, probably with our Finance Committee meeting too.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, this is going to be a roll call? No? Oh, okay, so we just do a regular? Okay. Okay. All those in favor of postponing this?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to postpone has been approved. Okay. Council Paper 12,262.
Yeah, excuse me, yeah. The full motion was to also send it to Finance.
Oh, okay.
That was...
All right, so I stay corrected to send it to Finance?
I don't know if you need to state that for the record or not.
Okay. The motion was also to send this... A motion approved to send this to the Finance Committee and to postpone it to the first... The second meeting in May?
First meeting.
First meeting in May, thank you. Okay.
Do we need to revote that?
Yeah, let's do that, okay. Okay, so postpone this to the first... Motion to postpone this to the first meeting in May and refer to the Finance Committee. Although, motion and a second?
We already had a motion.
Okay. All those approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Council Paper 12,262, Communication from Counselor Bona requesting time for Kurt Kolot to speak on the proposal to lease MCLA's Berkshire Towers as a homeless shelter. Counselor Bona, would you like to introduce Mr. Kolot, please?
Sure. I just like to say, Mr. Kolot came to me. Obviously, he's expressed concerns, similar to others that we have heard tonight. I'll have some slightly variations. Just one, I would like to say, one of the biggest issues that I have is the lack of communication and transparency and what we have not been told as a city. So it's hard for the city to prepare. I think Mr. Malazo had it correct in the sense of, you know, if these are, you know, visitors or guests, that if they need health services, you know, do we have a surplus of them to be able to take care of that without also taking them away from our current citizens? And I think a big one that I have concerns with is also our school system. You know, again, without knowing exactly the families that may be coming in and how that... What that's going to add to our school system. We have heard references that there could possibly be immigrants. And, you know, if we all of a sudden get 50 students, that English is their second language, that will have an impact on what we have to put into our school system. Not opposed to it, but with the lack of transparency we are getting, the city has, you know, has a difficult time preparing for it, as do all other health, human services, public services, public safety, that would need to service these people along with our current citizen. That being said, I will pass it on to Mr. Kolot.
Kurt Kolot from North Adams. And so I'm a neighbor of MCLA and have been for 22-plus years. And they've been great most of the time, and it's been an easy neighbor to have. Lately, though, I felt like there's been no communication from the college, which is what kind of caused me to, you know, get a little stirred up over this particular issue. And facing declining enrollment just months after passing up the chance to purchase and control the Boardman Block for future use, MCLA now seeks to relocate 50 to 75 homeless families from outside North Adams on a, quote, "temporary" basis. And 50 to 75 families, if you think about how many individuals that is, if you just average each family at two, you know, you're talking a lot of people. So we need to keep that in mind as we think about this too. And so they're thinking of doing this in the Berkshire Towers dorm through summer 2024 without engaging the local community, and until very recently, without publishing certain process documents that are required by law to be made public. There were meeting notes, meeting minutes, that should have been up in November, December, that were not up when one of my friends actually researched them through FOIA requests and was able to get those. The day he received them, they were up online at MCLA. So transparency is definitely not there. As a North Adams resident and a supportive neighbor at MCLA for over 22 years, I have to do what I can to make sure that MCLA's proposal to lease the Berkshire Towers dorms be addressed publicly and transparently instead of behind closed doors, as it's been done so far. I've met with numerous neighbors and friends who feel the same way I do. Even in the couple of cases where their initial response may have been in favor of the proposal, their perspective became less certain after discussions of the many impacts the proposed project would likely have on North Adams, such as mental and physical health resources and services, social and city services, public safety capabilities, school classes and programs. All of the additional stresses placed on those programs and services require one of two things: more funding or fewer services offered to current North Adams residents, or both. Any money from this proposal would go directly to MCLA coffers, while any costs or expenses associated with local programs and services would be theirs to bear alone. This would certainly result in reduced or compromised capabilities. MCLA is directly responsible for 451 jobs in North Adams, not including any indirect employment or businesses hired or supported by students, faculty, staff, or visitors. Its decisions have a direct and significant impact on our community. Between fall 2019 and fall 2022, there was an average decline in national undergraduate enrollment of about 8% among all colleges. However, public colleges showed a slight increase, except for MCLA. Based on the published enrollment numbers, MCLA's admission between fall 2019 and fall 2023 will result in a decline of nearly 50% from pre-pandemic levels. Those are their numbers. This makes me believe that despite the college's response in the MEMA, or Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, I guess, survey required as part of this proposal, where they stated they were in strong financial shape, the college is in fact facing some huge challenges ahead that could result in crises in North Adams. MCLA's enrollment decline should not be seen as something out of scope or out of the hands of city leadership. Just as the proposal to turn a dorm into a homeless shelter has a direct effect on the city's well-being, so does the health of our local college. We've seen what the closures of Sprague and the hospital have done to the community in the past. In the instance of this current proposal, MCLA seems to think they exist in a vacuum, when in fact, they are a major part of North Adams. I'm not against providing housing for anyone who needs it. I just don't believe this particular choice is a suitable option for MCLA's future stability or for the strength and stability of our city. Such a proposal would require many additional resources or deplete any we may already have and to an unsustainable level. As I seek answers through my own inquiries and conversations, I would like to present a list of questions to the council and the mayor for serious consideration in public conversations in the coming days and weeks. And I know that... I'm not looking for any of you or all of you to solve this situation because I understand how it's working over there. The college is a state institution, and the powers given to one particular individual over there apparently allow him to make these decisions all on his own. And yet, the impacts it's going to have on the city, on the neighborhoods, on the people that live in the streets around, is huge. So my questions. Will the campus police be responsible for any additional security assistance? Or will MCLA require help from NAPD? If so, where does funding come from? For additional officers? And/or how would that impact their ability to address existing community needs? The college has yet to engage the community in discourse on the topic. Even though they claimed, actually Jamie Burge claimed, in the minutes from a November board meeting that they saw communication with the community as a priority. That clearly hasn't happened. Will the City Council or mayor request that President Burge attend a future council meeting or arrange a public forum to address any questions or concerns MCLA's neighbors and city residents may have? What is city leadership doing to work with MCLA to protect the 400-plus jobs it represents in North Hires? What are the impacts and expectations regarding support services and resources required by the proposed new residents? Schools, additional teachers, busing, special needs resources, class size, costs, budget increases, public safety, police, EMTs, et cetera. Health and mental health resources, already not able to meet the needs of local community. I had a friend who had to go to the hospital in Pittsfield for a mental health emergency because he couldn't get an appointment for six weeks as an emergency case. And we're going to add hundreds of people to the possible needs of those services? Primary care physicians? I've got friends who are driving to Lenox and Lee for a primary care physician. We don't have any around here. They're taking new patients. Mental health professionals, the same thing. The burnout rate at Brain Center and others is huge. Public transportation, will bus service be expanded so these new residents can get to jobs and appointments? What is city... Excuse me. What is city leadership doing to ensure that existing North Adams residents have affordable housing? It's a huge issue right now. Both subsidized and non-subsidized. When a two-bedroom is renting for $1,600 right now, that's crazy. So there's a big gap in what we need as a local community, and that isn't necessarily what we need. Where would children housed on campus play? Where would the adults housed on campus relax and engage in outdoor activities? Is there a designated outdoor smoking area, including disposal containers? Excuse me. MCLA did not provide an answer to this in particular in the MEMA survey. There's no local park. So it should be assumed that they would walk across the street and socialize on campus grounds. The designated parking for the two towers is limited to 50 spaces. For normal bed-and-breakfast operations... Put some water, sorry. I am almost done, I promise. Excuse me. Sorry, now I've got to find my spot here. Okay. Okay. So for normal bed and breakfast operations, city zoning requires two parking spots per room. Where will any overflow parking occur? How would the proposal ensure the future stability and success of MCLA? Personally, I don't think Mr. Burge is considering the future success of MCLA or North Adams. How would the proposal impact future enrollment numbers? They're already nose-diving. Are there other facilities within North Adams that could be used or built out to provide this type of temporary housing for homeless families? I mean, one thought came to mind was Orchard's Hotel in Williamstown. I highly doubt that Williamstown would let that happen. So they tend to throw these things on North Adams, the 10th poorest community in the entire Commonwealth, the 8th poorest city in Massachusetts. What, if anything, can be done to encourage the MCLA president and board of directors to engage the community and seek input prior to making significant campus changes that would have major impacts on the city? And that last one relates not just to this project, it also relates to any other huge undertaking MCLA may have that would have a direct impact on the services that our residents are supposed to be getting. And again, I know that you're not here to answer all these questions for me. I think it's really important that we hear from our city leaders on this. Jamie Burge should have had a public forum in the very early stages of this to just invite people to the Church Street Center to discuss this, to ask questions. Never happened, you know, got out through a leak and a story was written. And I guess I speak for a lot of people. When I talk to my friends, they're like, wait, what's happening? I haven't heard about this. What's the city doing? Oh, well, the city really can't do anything. This is a state entity. We need to hear from all of you that if you can't, if your hands are tied, tell us your hands are tied. But I guess what I believe is that, you know, I understand when something happens the way that it's supposed to happen, that we have limited options to make change. But if there's enough here, enough energy, enough people, enough resources in town who do not want this specific thing to happen, we don't want a college that is already having huge declining enrollment issues with, you know, a really large addiction recovery housing on one side, a 50 to 75 homeless family project on the other, addiction services a block and a half away, a homeless shelter that already addresses some of our local homeless concerns two blocks away, and the Ashland Towers which are seeing more and more problems. Speaking to a local police officer, he said they're going there at least a dozen times a day. They didn't do that when it was elderly housing. So I just want us all to consider how a project like this is going to impact the city, not just in the next couple of years, in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. How is it going to impact MCLA's enrollment? If I were a parent, I think I'd have to call into question whether or not I want my kid to leave the house for the first time on his own or her own to go to college between two compromised populations. And we can't say that homeless people are going to cause a lot of crime and, you know, drug activity. That's not something we can say. They're homeless. I mean, you know, many, because of no fault of their own. But this is not the solution. And I want to make sure that we just do whatever we can to raise the alarm and at least try and get Jamie Burge or whatever future president of MCLA to know that he has to communicate with the city on these bigger issues because we will suffer along with everybody else. And thank you, Keith, for putting it forward for me and I appreciate you listening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colak. Give us a lot to think about. Okay. I'm sorry. Counselor Bona, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Colak. One thing that I, and I don't know if the mayor wishes to extend anything further, but I, you know, having discussion with the mayor, I don't think this is all on the college as we may think. You know, from my understanding is that this has probably come down more from a state level above the college where they have done an inventory of state-owned properties where they feel they can bring in, you know, convert to a home of shelter for, you know, various reasons, from immigrants to domestic, you know, mothers and families and things like that. So they've looked at their own properties and it just so happens that they own the towers and they see it. What I would like to see, at least one thing with the media here, is to have the names, departments, the emails, the addresses of the state departments that are connected to this decision where our citizens can reach out and express their different opinions. Not everyone's opposed to it, not everyone's against it, you know, and, but where at least, I think that's one thing we don't know. We don't really know. I understand Mr. Colak is pointing the finger a lot at the MCLA president, but it may be above him in the sense that he's being told, you got to do this. So we don't know. I'm just saying that if the media does write this, it'd be great to have some different contact information of who the citizens can reach out to that actually have a direct effect on this. Thank you.
Any of the other counselors wish to speak? Counselor Harpen?
Mr. Colak, thank you so much. Very well said and very thorough of what is happening. I'm also close to the neighborhood. I'm not really right in MCLA neighborhood, but I'm pretty close by. I'm also a graduate of MCLA, so I am quite concerned myself. Unfortunately, you know, when I read about this, I believe the Board of Trustees are trying to get some kind of decision-making process with President Burge. So it's just very difficult if I see that the Board of Trustees are not even being able to make a decision on this. And I know that the mayor has been in contact. And so I'm trying to figure out what we can do as a council, maybe have a resolution of some kind that we send to President Burge and our state representative and state senator and the governor, indicating, you know, our displeasure in this decision. So that's an option that we can discuss. But seeing that the Board of Trustees are not even getting, you know, decisions on this, it's hard to say that the council can really have an impact on this decision-making process with President Burge.
Counselor Obasahan?
Thank you, Mr. Colak, for bringing this forward. And I would say that I had the opportunity to hear President Burge on, as this was a topic, on our alumni board, which we just had, alumni board meeting that we just had this past weekend, one of the other hats that I wear. And during that meeting, kind of put on my council hat and expressed the concerns that a lot of you have expressed tonight around the issues around that building being for our homeless population. And I can tell you that what Burge shared with me is that he also had the same questions and these questions still have not been answered. And I didn't take the opportunity or had the opportunity to read the minutes from the MCLA meeting, but from what was told to me and the board was that, you know, the questions that I had was around what is the, you know, the education behind this, you know, and it didn't inform him like that it's the transparency that for the community that it did not happen and it should have happened earlier on when this discussion was taking place. And, you know, going forward with any other, you know, conversations that's going to happen needs to involve the community. And he expressed that he was on board with that and is going to be going forward with, and I'm not entirely sure when that would be, or, you know, I think what he wanted to do was to have the answer to a lot of your questions that you had tonight that he doesn't have the answers to. But, you know, like you said, if you don't have the answers to those questions, make it known that you do not have the answers to those questions because we, as a community, is waiting to get, waiting to hear what is happening, you know. Hearing about it in a newspaper or like this is a decision that has already been made is worrisome, especially, you know, for people who live in that community. And I'm one who also lives within a neighbor of MCLA, very, very close to campus. And, you know, the two facilities that you mentioned about the Boardman's and then Berkshire Towers, I'm like right smack dab in the middle of that. And so a lot of your questions were my questions as well. And I can tell you that, you know, he told me in the board that he is seeking the answers to those and no decisions have been made yet on the use of Berkshire Towers. So, but I did express to him that I hope that any decisions that are going to be made forward and not sure, like he also expressed, like, you know, it is at a state level and they have control over that building. But with those questions being asked, I hope they are taken into account on whoever the representatives are from the state that is handling this, that they also meet with the community as well and some type of open forum. And that should be in the plan in the future. I'm not entirely sure when. But I hope that, you know, this, because we all can refill the state of MCLA at the moment. And it has been a huge discussion during our board meetings around enrollment. And I will say that, you mentioned that there is this wall that is up with MCLA within this community and it's on both sides, you know, within MCLA and I would also say with the community as well, you know, because there's been numerous of times of different projects who are proposals or initiatives that could have happened that kind of fell through. So I think that it takes the work of MCLA along with the community. And I would also say, you know, we need to involve the voices of the current students, the families of the current students and any potential students that would like to enroll at MCLA because I think this is, it's a huge topic that needs to be talked about that's going to determine the future of the community going forward, MCLA going forward. And it is even a bigger conversation on the status of MCLA. That also needs to involve the voices of the community because just as, you know, we mentioned, MCLA is a big supporter of this community, you know, I think it also has to happen on the other side too. The community has to be big supporters of MCLA and help support with what, how we can increase enrollment and what that would look like because engaging the current students in downtown, I mean, has been a big conversation and attempts to happen and we got to bridge that gap with our current students because, you know, it's more than what's across the street from the campus and, you know, moves into the experiences of our students in downtown as well in the community. So it's a larger conversation that needs to happen and it involves all those parties to be at the table.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Colak. Yes. It's his communication.
So I hate to even think this, but there are two issues with what you've told me about your conversation with Jamie Burge. So he tells you that he doesn't have the answers to those questions and yet he's about to sign this deal. I mean, who would sign a deal if they don't have the answers to the questions? So that's the one. But the flip side is, and I've been having conversations with a lot of people who are very connected with various aspects of the college. And apparently, he claims that he has administrative license based on his role as president of the college to make the decision without the board at all. Board members are not being asked to make the decision. So, you know, there's some really, really big issues there. And there wasn't a wall between the college and the city 12 years ago when Mary Grant was here. Mary Grant showed up on Main Street, Downstreet Celebration, she might, you know, be at one of the regular gallery openings. She was going to Gallery 51 every single time they had an event. She went to all of the home games of every athletic team in the college. I mean, you saw her and she was approachable. So she's the one who broke that wall. You know, there may have been one before she came on. She broke it. It got rebuilt somehow. He lives two doors down from me. I've never seen him in the neighborhood. Seen his cars with New Hampshire license plates because he's not a Massachusetts resident. He's not invested in North Adams and he is therefore not invested in the future of MCLA. So, you know, it's a much, much bigger issue, but we have some serious work to do. I think we do need to go over the college, go to the state level, to the agencies responsible for making this proposal to begin with. That's who we need to reach out to. And to Marie's comments, thank you. I think what the city council could do, or maybe it's Mayor Maxi, schedule a public meeting over this issue. And maybe you've got no real information to share, maybe it's just, we want to hear what you're all thinking. And let people speak, record the comments and invite, invite the whole board of MCLA and invite the president. So I think that's one way.
Mayor Maxi?
Counselor.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Shade.
First, thank you for coming and bringing this on the agenda. And thank you for all the members of the community who came out to speak out one way or another or talk about this issue. Clearly, we don't have the information we need and clearly there is no communication from either the state or the college to the community. And that is an issue. I don't know that we're going to get the answers directly from President Burge or the college. So I do believe that you are absolutely correct that the next step is to go to the state and ask these questions. And they need to be here in this community to answer them. We need to find the answers together. As an alumni of MCLA, I went to the college when Dr. Grant was there. And Dr. Grant was an amazing administrator, very kind and friendly. But I will say that there were still some walls up. And even as a local resident who went there, I saw the walls between the students and the local community. She started to break those down, but those walls still existed and they still are kind of the same ones today. A lot of students on campus don't feel comfortable in the downtown and don't always feel welcomed by locals. That's something we all have to do better at, just welcoming people to the community. I think that's happened since the pandemic era where like new people have come into the community and moved here and have been more welcomed, but not always and not from everybody. And that's something we have to look at all over. That's all of us, that's the community. But MCLA is supposed to be a community partner. We are supposed to work together. They are part of our community. The students, when they live there, are residents of North Adams while they are on campus. They are residents just like all of us. They live there. They live here in the city. And so it's important that their voices are also heard. The fact that we don't have answers and people are saying, well, we don't know what the answers are and we don't know where to get them is very concerning to me. We have a contract ready to be executed. It's improper. It's not okay. And I agree with everybody here who says we need to know what's going on. We need to be part of this discussion. As a city council, we don't have the authority to stop this. There's, we don't own the property. The state owns the Berkshire Tower, so the council can't just like write an ordinance to say no. If it were that simple, you know, but it's not. It's something that's way above the local laws, but it's not above the state laws because that's where it's coming from. So the next step really is to get the answers from the state, whether that's the state agency or the governor's office directly. I think those are the avenues that we need to reach out to and get involved to answer these questions. Because at the end of the day, when it comes to state level, it's the governor and the governor's office that has the ultimate authority and power over all of this. So if the state agency isn't going to answer our questions and the college isn't going to answer our questions, then we need to go there. And we need to, not just the council do that, but everybody in the community do that as well because it takes many voices to be heard when you're talking about getting answers on the state level. So I think that's the point where we're at. We just want to have conversations and we want to know what's going on. I don't know enough details one way or another to say I'm for or against this proposal. I know as a student who lived in the Berkshire Towers at one point, those facilities are not meant for families. I would love to know how those would be renovated to make I would love to know how those would be renovated to make room for families before trying to put families in there. Because right now, they're not appropriate for a family to be in there long term. And while they say temporary, 18 months is not temporary. That's long term. Sorry. Even our short-term rentals, you know, beyond a year is long term, you know? It's not. So we don't know, but it's important to have this conversation. Everybody who's spoken out, asked questions, everybody who's brought this to the attention, thank you. It's extremely important. You are being heard here, and now it's time for all of us to go ask the state to step up and answer some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Colak, for your letter and everyone that's here tonight. When you ask about what the city leadership is doing, I think it was in February, I met with the college and the state DHCD via Zoom call with the superintendent, and they outlined their plan and what they've done in other communities. And I said, that's great, well, how are you going to do that in North Adams? What wraparound services are going to be provided in Berkshire Towers? What are we going to do about public safety when I'm running a third shift with two people and MCLA doesn't have a third shift? What's going to happen then? I've asked the questions about childcare. I almost feel like you're my Irish twin, because as I read the letter, I'm like, boy, he has a bug in my office. Those questions have been asked. Those questions also have been asked of the state. And the answer I got of the February meeting was, we're still developing a plan. They can name ServiceNet, but they can't name the wraparound services and what the op plan is going to look like. And I said, we need to know. I am a former MCLA employee. I took lots of pride in the work I did on that campus, and I really think they should be focused on student engagement, building enrollment. This is an enrollment strategy nightmare from a former higher ed professional, and it is a nightmare in my community. So I want you to know that I've had those discussions. I don't kick and scream like other people, but we've had those discussions, and I really want to help our own first. I, too, cannot find a primary care physician, and I live here. What's going to happen to those young kids who get earaches every other day? They're going to be in the ER and tax those services. We've talked about all of that, but again, I get met with the same thing. Well, we don't have the answer. And I specifically asked, I want an op plan for that building, because I am concerned when they burn toast, and my fire department has to go there. I am concerned about where the kids are going to play. I'm concerned about these people after they leave the program, or God forbid, they get bounced from the program. Where are they going to go? They're going to come on our doorsteps. And I'm really concerned about that community. That community's been rocked by two very serious events, and we, as an administration, have tried to come around the community, but I've expressed those concerns to MCLA. I've had two conversations with Lieutenant Governor about this, who I consider a good friend and colleague, and it is, we'll get you that information. Well, the time is now. Everybody knows about it, but nobody has the answers. So we're still asking. We're still asking. And honestly, I don't know how many times we have to ask before we can get that information. And as far as a community meeting, there are people who are trying to encourage MCLA to have a community meeting, but they're not ready to talk. That's what I'm told. They're still penning the agreement. But how can you pen an agreement when you don't know what the op plan is that you're signing up for? And I'm very concerned about the provider that they're putting in that building, and I look at it from a public safety, first of all, concern. I want to help people, but I want to help my own people first. And the demographic of the population continues to change as these conversations evolve. But I go back to MCLA, as you said, is an important employer in this community. The students that we have, I look to Council Obasahan, who was a former student of mine. I'm thrilled to have someone like a Councilor Obasahan invest in the community. We want more of that, but we need to build enrollment. And the focus should be on students and academic programs. And I understand that this may provide some financial relief as we're reading in the newspapers, but you have to look beyond that. And I would just want you to know that those questions have been asked on several occasions, and I'm met with the same, I don't want to say resistance, because I get the answer, we're working on that. I want to know how many professional social workers are going to be in the building, and what they're going to do with security, and what that plan looks like, and I don't have those answers either. So I'm just as frustrated and as nervous as all of you. We will continue to encourage dialogue, but again, I think Counselor Shade summed it up, it's at a state level, but that's not an excuse why we can't be a little loud and proud.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colak. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Colak, for your comments. Just want to add a little bit to that. Yes, I think that the community and the college should work together. They are technically a resident of the city of North Adams, and they should be respectful of us as we should be of them. And I hope that, you know, I've heard a lot of good ideas on opening a dialogue with the college. Hopefully, the state and the college are willing to work with us on this and, as a community, be resilient, and let's work together, and let's hopefully, in the near future, we can get some answers on that. Thank you. Okay. 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 Licenses. Application submitted by Mary Ann George to be granted a secondhand dealer license for Mary Ann Teaks and Gifts. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Leskowitz and Counselor Wilson, or Wilkinson?
At least you didn't call me Leskowitz.
I was coming.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. All right. Comments, Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I have some comments. Through the chair to the mayor? Harpen? Yep. I'm not sure if you are the right person, but I know you can lead me in the right direction. So I'm trying to find out, when I saw this, I said, geez, I haven't seen a lot of secondhand licenses coming through. So I looked up the ordinance, and Section 12-2 for the fees, secondhand dealers, April through October is a $100 fee, which I'm assuming that Mrs. George is applying for, right?
Right, it is, yep.
Okay. And then there's another fee, November through March, for $50. So I'm wondering, are there more licenses coming forth? Because I know there's many more secondhand stores in the city, and I have not seen any of these, and I would hate to charge Mrs. George for a fee that we're not charging any longer.
Right, yeah, no, and we've had a couple people come forward, you know, back in October, we had Mr. Montipire come in for his secondhand dealer application. But yeah, I'm not sure, as far as, I'm not sure if, you know, just with the turnover in the city clerk's office, if, you know, it's, you know, they typically come into our office to, you know, I don't know if there's a set time in the calendar where, you know, they'll come into the, come into our office to, you know, automatically renew. I'm not sure if there's been letters in the past that have been addressed to them. But that is something that, you know, when that came forward, when Mary Ann George came forward for her secondhand dealer license, that is something that, you know, I thought about, I was, you know, I kind of wondered, I'm like, oh, shoot, we haven't been having a lot of these people come in for, you know, for their own licenses. So I'm going to look into that in the next week before I leave and get to the bottom of that.
Okay. So there will be more forthcoming?
There should be, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Opposed. Okay. One abstention? Okay. All right. Open forum. This is the opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. Okay. Mr. Smith?
I live at 163 North Street. First off, definition in the dictionary of a junkyard reads, a place where scrap is collected before being recycled or discarded. I'm disappointed that some aspect of the city government, instead of going forward, is going backwards again. There's a man who owns an automobile service in the city on River Street, and he has a lot of cars that he needs to work on. And some unintelligent people in our city are calling that a junkyard, but that's not the definition in the dictionary of a junkyard. Now, this man runs a very good business for senior citizens. Gives breaks to the people. He has them pay in different ways, not outright all the time. He's very helpful to our community. And yet, there's part of this government that wants to pick on this guy because he has a lot of cars he has to work on, and they call it a junkyard. I think that has got to stop. We got to go forward, and the city, we're not supposed to be closing businesses. We're supposed to add businesses so we can get tax revenue, shore up the budget every year. But there's some people in this government that don't see it that way. I begin to wonder, what kind of brains do they have in their head? We need to do something to keep this guy going and business. This baloney has got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Cardamino?
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. The question I have, if the people at MCLA are so enthusiastic about this homeless people, would you be willing to bring a family into your house first? And how about the other people involved? Would they bring their families into their house?
Mr. Cardamino, could you speak into the microphone, please?
That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Put your money where your mouth is.
Mr. Gillman?
I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate just listening, and I look forward to the Finance Committee meeting where we can have a discussion. I understand the questions about the enterprise fund, that's not really, I mean, that would be great, that's, I think that's a longer, bigger conversation, but right now, I'm just looking for transparency in the numbers and the budget, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Yes, please. Yes. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Donna Roberts. I've been a resident of North Adams for 45 years, and I have some concerns about the lack of transparency in regards to the MCLA situation. Like Mayor Maxi, I, too, am concerned about the services that we have in our city that get completed on a regular basis, whether it be police, fire, EMTs, doctors, substitute teachers. I just signed up to be a substitute teacher because we have a shortage of them. And to add an additional strain to our academic system with 50, 75 new families, second languages, there's so many questions that haven't been answered. And one of my first questions is, what is our representative Barrett have to say about what's going on in our city? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
He's asking a lot of questions at MCLA.
He's asking a lot of questions. Before this...
He also sits on their board.
He sits on their board. Well, then, let's hope that our representative, who is also a member of our community, is going to speak up for the people of North Adams. We have been through some really tough times in this city. We're making a comeback. Let's preserve, let's advertise what MCLA has to offer, this nursing program, what an opportunity. Our science building that was just built, there are so many positives that we need to put out there and advertise the good of MCLA, and not look for the state to use our city as a location to relocate.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum?
Amber Bisaw, 134 Brooklyn Street, also Executive Director of the Northern Berkshire Community Coalition. And on behalf of our organization, I just wanted the city council, and certainly the mayor and the community to know that my organization and the organization of Berkshire Housing, which does housing across the county, have offered a public forum with a moderator to MCLA's president and to those involved, and we are continuing to offer that service and continuing to say we would take the responsibility of putting that on and making sure that we get our public officials into this space from the state and others. So know that's out there. The invitation has been made, and we are continuing to pursue that, and we're willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Malazo?
I'm going the long way around.
You can get arrested for that.
Whatever.
Okay, just a thought. I know this is maybe impossible. Is there a way for the city officials to officially request the presence of our governor and our other elected state officials to come do an onsite visit, have some of our healthcare professionals there that can speak to what the capacity is of this city, have our law enforcement, local and state law enforcement at this meeting, as well as members of this community, and have actually the state elected officials here to see what we have going on in this city? Maybe they'll put up some more services or money to help this community if they want this project to go forward. Let them be here in this city, and I'm not sure if we can, can anyone answer that? Can we request them, or kind of formally request them in letter format or something, and get them here to actually answer for what they're about to do to our community? Thank you.
Thank you.
Going the long way around. Call the police.
Okay. We'll give you a pass.
Okay. Anybody else? And now, it's time for mayor updates.
I'm done for tonight.
For tonight, thank you.
That's my bad.
All right. Committee reports in minutes. Hearing none. Liaison updates and counselor concerns. Counselor Harpen?
Yes. I don't want to bring bad vibes, because I think this has been a great meeting with a lot of people from the community coming and speaking. However, some of the things I think that I heard tonight was, you know, frustration with the state government and the college and not being able to have transparency and access to information, right? So at the end of last year, I filed an open meeting law complaint, because there was an email that was sent to the entire council on an issue that was being discussed in a very soon-to-be city council meeting involving taxes, which was very important to the community, very important to the city council and the leadership of North Adams. So we did get the response... So, we did get the response today, and the complaint alleges that the council deliberated outside of a posted meeting on November 18th, 2022. The Office of the Attorney General responded. Following a review, we find that the council, as a whole, violated the open meeting law by deliberating outside of the posted meeting by email. In reaching this determination, we reviewed the original complaint, the board's response to the complaint, and the complainant's request for further review. So, as we sit here and discuss transparency, I think that, you know, it's something that we could, we can look at as, as a committee, at the committee's level, and as the city council, and as administration, to better serve the public. And we are elected officials. We are here and actually required to be in open government, and our decisions and our deliberations need to be done in public meetings. That's, that's the requirement of the law. So, hopefully, this was a, a learning experience, and this city council can go forward following the open meeting laws.
Thank you.
This is available online. If anybody wants to read the determination letter from the Attorney General Office, you can go to www.mass.govopenmeetinglaw to read the determination. It's quite interesting.
Thank you. Anybody else? At this time, I wish to congratulate Mr. Valiers on his recent engagement. Congratulations. I hope that you have a happy life. Also, this is also his last council meeting that he'll be presiding at as city clerk, and he'll be moving on to other things, other adventures in life, and I wish him the best and to stop in and say hi to us and pay a visit to us here at the council meetings and around town at some point.
I will very frequently.
Thank you very much. Okay. One other thing, my question is for the mayor, this is real quick. I noticed that if our meetings run, tend to run a little bit long, the lighting in the south parking lot of the city hall is not lit. Is there a possibility of having that stay on a little bit later on meeting nights, if possible? Because I noticed that it's hard to see the curbs and stuff when you're out there.
We'll work on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Probably been like that for 30 years.
Okay. All right. All right. I have no correspondence. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Obasahan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.